Hello, everybody. Welcome to tonight's forum. Para escuchar en español, por favor, toque el botón de interpretación abajo. I am going to turn it over to Gina from Community Action Marin to make my opening remarks.
Thank you, Juliette. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for this candidate forum, featuring two candidates for the Nevada Unified School District Board of Education. My name is Gina Gilmet, and I serve as Chief Strategy Officer with Community Action Marin. It is my pleasure to be with all of you this evening, focused on the children of our community, and how we can ensure a quality education for each and every one of them. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Marin County for organizing and moderating this evening's important event. Community Action Marin is pleased to be co-hosting this event in partnership with Marin Promise Partnership, Ten Thousand Degrees, Canal Alliance, and Nevada School Fuel. We are fortunate to live in a community that cares deeply about education and to have partners who are collectively committed to equity in our schools. We know that educational equity is possible in our community, and school board members play a critical leadership role in achieving that goal. We are delighted to be part of this forum to ensure that voters, who also play a key role, have an important opportunity to make an informed decision on who will represent them on the Board of Education. Thank you all for being here. And now I'm pleased to turn over this evening's moderator, Sue Ream.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Sue Ream, and I will be your moderator this evening. Thank you for joining us for this candidate forum, featuring candidates for the Nevada Unified School District Board of Trustees, Area 4. And thank you to our host partners Marin Promise, Ten Thousand Degrees, Canal Alliance, Community Action Marin, and Nevada School Fuel for inviting the League to moderate this evening. We are honored to be here. We'd also like to thank our host partners, along with members of the public, for submitting tonight's questions. The League is a trusted, nonpartisan membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We promote voter education and advocates for issues. We never endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. Moderating candidate forums is an important part of this work. With me tonight are League members Connie Segenthaler, our timekeeper, off-screen Carol M. Kelles, our forum coordinator, and Anna Wakely, who is providing Zoom support. Also with us off-screen is our Spanish interpreter Claudia Bachman. A reminder, all of our candidates have agreed to participate under the ground rules set for this forum. This forum is being simulcast on Comcast Channel 30 in Nevada, facilitated through our partnership with Nevada Community Television. It is being recorded and will be available through our website at marinlwv.org. It will be rebroadcast on Channel 30 in Nevada. Days and times will be posted on our website. Candidates will be allowed specific times for their opening and closing remarks and to respond to questions. There are two candidates running for the Nevada Unified School District Board of Trustees, Area 4, and both of them are here this evening. Teef Gibbs-Jensen and Abby Pickus. The candidates will be invited to make a two-minute opening statement. After that, each will have 90 seconds to answer each question. To be fair, I will rotate the order in which they respond to the questions. So for opening statements this evening, I'd like to begin with Teef. And don't forget to unmute yourself.
Hello, everyone. My name is Teef Gibbs-Jensen, and I am running for NUSD School Board, District 4. I want to thank all involved for providing this forum and inviting me to discuss the important issues facing NUSD schools. I am a wife and mother of two. My husband and I have a business in downtown Nevada called Vintage Vehicles that he opened in 1991. I have lived in Nevada since 2011, and I love Nevada. I live here, shop here, work here, and play here. My motto is, if it isn't in Nevada, I don't need it. In March of 2020, I got angry. Nevada schools shut down, and both my son and daughter's lives were turned upside down. Originally, we were told schools would open in two weeks. Two weeks turned into the rest of the school year. My son's senior year ended, and my daughter's sophomore year was gone. Then the schools didn't open in the fall, like many other schools throughout the country. School officials obfuscated and prevaricated, opening the schools. As the months went by, I knew my daughter's school situation would have to change. Nevada high schools were still remote in March of 2021. We had to make difficult decisions. As a state-ranked girl wrestler, I knew her sports opportunities would be decimated. I was angry. I was angry at our city council members. I was angry at our supervisors and our school officials. Many of the decisions made by these representatives have long-term negative consequences to the most vulnerable among us. As the evidence is out today, we are in an educational five-alarm fire that will require every resource at our disposal, and then some. That is why I'm running for school board. I decided to get beyond my anger and look for solutions. I am turning my anger into action, and my agenda is educating our children, never locking children out of school again, providing a safe and enriching learning environment, and rebuilding trust with our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Teef. Abby?
Great. First of all, thank you all so much for hosting this evening. I'm Abby Pickus. I am a mother of three young kids. My oldest daughter is seven, and she's in first grade in our Nevada schools. And all of my kids will be moving through our school system. I'm also a high school teacher. This is my 18th year teaching at Tam High School. So I bring both a parent and a teacher perspective. Currently, there is no K-12 educator sitting on our school board, and we are in the business of educating kids. So I bring a very important perspective to our schools. As a high school teacher, I teach a traditional English classroom, but I also run programs that focus on building a positive school culture and intervention programs that provide targeted support to students who really need that support in order to thrive. So I bring a perspective that understands how our classrooms work, how our school systems work, and what we need to do to address the needs of our students. I am a firm believer in public education. I think that public schools are designed to ensure that every student in our community has access to a high-quality education. And I think it's important that our school board members are there to ensure that every kid, regardless of what they look like, what language they speak, where their family comes from, they all have access to a high-quality education. I'm particularly concerned with the mental health of our students right now. We have skyrocketing rates of mental health issues. And so it's really important to me that we are taking care of the mental health of our students, not just because we want our kids to be healthy, but also because healthier students means that we have students who are able to learn better. We know there's a direct correlation between the mental health of our students and how well students are able to learn. And so that's a really important aspect of our schools that I hope to bring. It's also really important that we are paying attention to our budget. We have a lot of needs in our schools, and we have to think creatively about how to attract and retain the really high-quality educators that we have and the high-quality staff that we have, and also how we can attract new staff into our district as we have some staff leaving us because they retire. So I bring a really important perspective to our schools. And it's really important, I think, that we have an educator on the board who understands what's happening in our schools and can understand when we make cuts or when we bring in new programs, how that impacts our students in their classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to head into the question part of the program, and you'll each have 90 seconds to respond. And again, I'm going to alternate it, but I am going to start with Abby, so we can do this alternating. What are the top needs at Nevada Unified School District, and how will you address them?
Great. Certainly, as I mentioned, I think that mental health is a major focus. And that's not just specific to Nevada, although it certainly is specific to Nevada. In talking with counselors and teachers and just staff at our schools, we know that students are really struggling. We also know that adults are struggling. And I think that when we are thinking about healthy schools, we need to be thinking about, you know, who are the people in our community and how can we take care of them? And my experience in schools helps me understand the things that we can do in schools that will help address student need. Also, you know, students are struggling. We're looking at test scores and the challenges that students are seeing across the United States in terms of learning loss from the pandemic and understanding the programs that we can bring in, how we can collaborate with other schools and other programs, and certainly, community partnerships to address those needs. I also think that trust is really important. I think that there's a lot of trust that has been challenged by the pandemic, and it's important that we are collaborating with our community, that we're talking to our neighbors who have kids in our schools and our neighbors who don't have kids in our schools, and that we open those lines of communication. I think one thing that our board can really focus on is creating more opportunities for community voice to be heard and bringing really everyone into the conversation. And we know that when we have a school board who works in alignment with our district, where they work collaboratively, that our schools function better. And so as a board, as we look to the challenges that our district is facing, I'd like to think about how we can all work together to address those challenges.
Thank you very much for that. And just a reminder, speak slowly, because we have our Spanish interpreter, who can only go as fast as she possibly can. All right. Teef, I'm going to turn it over to you. And just remind you with a question of what are the top needs of the Nevada Unified School District, and how will you address them? You're still muted.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, there we go. Our district is facing big challenges: ongoing budget planning, parcel tax renewal, curriculum reform, and policies that are not influenced by politics. The bottom line is that we are in a financial mess that is years in the making. And unfortunately, it's going to get worse as the California economy starts to downturn. We are in the midst of a collapse of the commercial real estate market in San Francisco, and hundreds of businesses have already fled California. So this is really important that we have a district that needs state funding to fill our financial bucket. And the current board has not done anything to make a change to our funding structure. I don't know why. What I will do, if I am elected, I will push the district, the board, and the unions to lobby our representatives, whoever they may be, to change the laws to create a reasonable funding model. We definitely need a parcel tax renewal. And the problem is, is that we tried to pass a parcel tax back in 2020 with no community input. And it is critical that we get that community input because the community is extremely mistrustful because of the Measure G bond funds. So we must pass that parcel tax. We're going to have to do it for eight years with between $251 and $365. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Abby, I want to throw it back to you once more time here. How is your perspective, background, and experience different than that of the current trustees?
Well, as I mentioned before, slowing down. As I mentioned before, you know, I am an educator, and I think that some of the frustrations that I've heard from parents and even staff is sometimes feeling like, you know, the immediate needs in our classroom. It's hard for a board that hasn't had that experience or isn't able to spend as much time in the classroom. They don't necessarily understand how the cuts that we sometimes are forced to make, how those impact students, and how those impact learning. And so I certainly bring that perspective as a classroom teacher. I also have worked as a consultant, and I have gone into other schools. And I've worked with other schools around school climate and school culture. So much of what the research and education shows us is that how students feel on our campuses, how connected they feel, how involved they are in what's happening on our campuses. Those sort of intangibles really play out in the academic world. And so when we're talking about test scores, when we're talking about academic success, we can't forget about those other pieces because they are all so closely intertwined. And I think that my experience brings that understanding. So when we're having conversations around budget, when we're looking at curriculum, when we're looking at community involvement, I bring that educator perspective as well as a parent perspective. You know, I'm really invested in these schools because I have kids who are coming through. Schools today look different than they did 10, 15 years ago, even five years ago. And so understanding the reality of schools today is something I bring.
Thank you, Abby. Teef? Don't forget to unmute yourself.
I'm a mom. I have two adult children. I went through NUSD schools. I'm a business owner. As I said, our business is in Nevada. I live in Nevada. So I am here to stay. I'm part of this community. I'm here long term. And I think that I represent a part of the community that is very upset with the way NUSD schools have been functioning. And I think that there's a lot of people out there that think there's been waste. And I think we need to get that trust back with the community. And so I believe, because I'm here, I'm here every day. I walk my dog. I go to coffee at Dr. Insomniac's. My business is in downtown Nevada. I am going to be very accessible. I'm going to probably be one of the most accessible Board of Trustees than everybody because I am here in the community. And I will be able to talk to community members, and I will just be available. I'll have, you know, coffee chats. And my phone number is on my candidate statement. My phone number is on my walk card. I am so accessible. That's what makes me different.
Thank you. All right. And you're going to get to start with the next question. How will you help lead a meaningful district-wide approach to anti-racism in our schools? What indicators will you focus on? Teef?
So Nevada schools have a very clear policy regarding treating all people, regardless of race, sexual orientation, or any other perceived differences with respect, kindness, and acceptance. It's sad to me, actually, that this question is continually asked as though no strides have been made here in Nevada. This same question was asked during the election of a trustee in 2020. Are we seriously no better off? I think not. Ask the Test Bay family, who is the recipient of love, kindness, and generosity from our Nevada community. We do not have a racism, bigotry, or discrimination problem in Nevada schools. We have an accountability problem. And let me give you an example. I know of a Nevada schoolgirl who was recently beat up. She was beat up by another girl after she was bullied by this girl. Both girls happened to have brown skin. And so what? What is shocking? The school did not call her parents. The school did not call the police, and they did not call the ambulance. Her mother had to. Her daughter was beat up so bad, she got a concussion. This is unacceptable. Children need to know that their actions have consequences. Teachers need to know that they are respected and protected, and parents need to back up this accountability. If neither exists, then we have a school district where no one feels safe.
Thank you. Abby?
Yeah, thank you for this question. I think this is a really important question. And I think there's a couple of different pieces to it. One, I think, is around education. I think when we talk about racism or anti-racism, it's really important that people understand what racism looks like in our community. I think for a long time, we have had these various stereotypical images of what racism looks like, KKK members burning crosses. But we know that in our communities, there are much more subtle examples of racism that our students of color experience on a daily basis. So part of the work we need to do is about educating people, even those of us who are very well-meaning and really want to do good in the world. We need to understand how the things that we do might be contributing to a racist community. And so that is part of what we need to be developing with our staff in NUSD. That is part of the education that we need to provide our kids. We also really need to uplift the voices of students of color in our community and really validate the experiences that they are having. And it is what research and data shows us. This is not just how we feel about racism. Research and data shows us that our students of color are impacted, their learning is impacted when they are victims of racism. We also need to make sure that we have clear processes on our campuses so if students see, experience, any incidents of harassment or racism, that they know where to report those incidents and that there is a clear path for accountability.
Thank you. Okay, Teef, you're going to start with this question. What will you do to understand the reality of what our faculty, staff, school leaders, students, and families experience each day, and how will you use this input?
Well, this actually goes back to me being accessible. You know, I live here on Center Road. I am here all the time. I'm here every day. And I plan to be, you know, be on the ground. My kids went to Pleasant Valley. They went to Sinaloa. They went to San Marin. And I know so many people in this community. I, you know, I'm very, very involved. And, you know, I am going to just be available. So that's really all I have to say. I'm just going to be here and working on the ground.
Abby?
Yeah, thank you. Could you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. What will you do to understand the reality of what our faculty, staff, school leaders, students, and families experience each day, and how will you use this input?
Great. I think that this comes down to a conversation around the avenues through which our community communicates with the school board and, you know, the teachers and staff. How are we, as a school board, soliciting information? I know as a teacher that my day job is so hectic that I rarely think about what I need to be telling my school board members about my experiences. And so I think it's on the onus, the responsibility of our school board members to put in place structures where teachers, families, and students can share their experience on a consistent basis. I think it is about school board members being accessible. But I also think it's about us having a more systematic approach to communication, right? So if one person does something, I think that's really important. But I also think that we need to have structures in place so if that person is not there anymore, that communication can still thrive. Because it's really important that our school board members are in tune with what's happening in our classrooms. I also think it would be great for our school board members to be in our classrooms, to shadow teachers for a day. This is something that some school board members do. They will go into schools and follow a teacher or follow a paraeducator or follow a staff member just to see what their daily experiences are like so that they really understand what the challenges are that those individuals are experiencing. So I'd love to see our school board members doing that. It's something that I would hope to do as a school board member as well. Thank you.
Okay. Next question, and this is going to go to you, Abby, to start this round. What are your views about book banning and taking certain information out of our school libraries and classrooms?
I think that it is saddening to me that we are having conversations. I have got, when I've been campaigning, I have had people ask me this question, and it saddens me that we're talking about book banning. I am an English teacher because I believe that literature expands our understanding of the world, that we have our own experiences to look at. But we are more empathetic. We are kinder. We are better humans when we understand other people's experiences. And when we ban books, we are saying that certain experiences are not worthy and in fact are harmful. And I think the more exposure we have, the better. That being said, certainly, books need to be age-appropriate. They need to be approved. And that's why we have educators. That's why we have book approval processes. That's why we have the experts, our educators, who understand what it means to be grade-level appropriate. You know, what is appropriate for fifth graders versus 12th graders? You know, we have all of those procedures and those guidelines in place. And I think that we should absolutely not be banning books from our schools. We need to do everything we can to broaden our students' horizons so that they can understand and navigate through our world more effectively and treat each other with more kindness. And I think the more exposure we have to different perspectives, the better we can relate to people who are different and the healthier our larger community is.
Thank you. Teef?
Yes. Well, first of all, parents need to be the number-one decider of what their children are reading, okay? But I have said from the beginning of my campaign that I am completely in favor of age-appropriate books in school libraries. My daughter was at Sinaloa School and checked a book out of the library, of the Sinaloa Library. And at some point while she was reading it, disclosed to me that it included a very graphic description of a girl overdosing on drugs. And I did tell the librarian that I thought this subject matter was inappropriate for a middle school library, okay? Now, if you're asking about banning books in general, I'm not in favor of that. I read that over 20,000 books are published every year. That's incredible. I can't imagine trying to sell all those books. Amazon, which originally started as a bookseller, is actually making decisions about which books it will sell. I don't know if that's censorship or banning books. I mean, they're an online bookseller. They can sell as many books as they want. Libraries have to make decisions about which books they will put on their shelves. They have limited space, and it must be very difficult to decide which books they should carry. While age-appropriate books should be available at school libraries, municipal libraries can make decisions about what books they make available. And parents are the final arbiters of what their children read or watch. And I respect a parent's right to choose that for their kids, what their kids are exposed to. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next question. This goes to Abby. How do you plan to increase the number of teachers of color in pre-K through 12?
Great. Thank you. An important question. We know that representation really matters. Not only so our students of color see themselves in leadership positions on our campus. And as I talked about, even that, which I say is a small thing, is not a small thing. It really impacts how comfortable our students of color feel on our campus. So it's really important that we prioritize hiring practices. Certainly, there is a need for teachers in general, and even more so, a need for teachers of color. There are numerous programs that exist at various schools where you can bring in newer teachers, where the district can partner with colleges, can partner with local teaching credentialing programs in order to train those individuals and bring them into their school system. And that is one way to, you know, identify the kinds of teachers that we're looking for to bring into our schools. I think the second part of that conversation is not just how do we bring in teachers of color, but also how do we retain those teachers? And that's a larger conversation around our budget. It requires us to continue looking at state advocacy because at the state level, we receive our funding based on enrollment. There is a movement to change and shift that funding so that it is about attendance-based funding, not enrollment-based funding. So we need to be strategic around what we're doing, recruiting, and communicating with our community around the parcel tax so that we can retain those teachers.
Thank you. Teef?
Yes, thank you. So I actually think Nevada has a really diverse teacher pool and principal pool. I mean, I see lots of different people. And this is a difficult question because this is also about attracting and retaining good, qualified teachers in general. And teachers go through four years of college. They pick a major. They have to go to school to get credentialed. And then they have to get a specialized credential sometimes for a particular subject. Then I understand they have to do an internship. Then they have to do something called induction that by all accounts is redundant, grueling, and time-consuming. I'm sorry if the teacher has a family because apparently it takes a lot of time away. And this process causes a lot of people to abandon the career of teaching. So I think that that definitely needs to be looked at on the state level as to why people don't complete their teaching credential. And we need to make a path to becoming a teacher streamlined. We need to be more flexible about who can become a teacher, doing away with a lot of the onboarding requirements for new teachers and allowing the administration to evaluate them during their trial period before tenure would really help. And we definitely need to be more flexible about part-time teachers. There's a lot of people that could teach, and they just can't do it full-time. And having part-time teachers would go a long way to encouraging more people and a more diverse pool. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And Teef, we're going to have you start out with this question. How will you ensure that parent engagement efforts are inclusive of and accessible across the district, including the working parents, limited, or non-English speakers?
Well, parent engagement is something that I think would be very easy to achieve. And what you have to do is you have to make it available, and you have to ask. I recently did the Blue Ribbon Committee with the NUSD for the parcel tax, and there were 70 participants, and a lot of them were parents, okay? They were parents of the kids at the school. And there's a budget oversight committee, and there is a Measure G bond oversight committee. And so I think that asking for parent involvement and parent input is really important. And then you have to have a variety of options for them. Sometimes it might just be one day. It might be one hour. I also think that we have some underutilized facilities at NUSD that we could use to partner with the parents and the kids for some kind of program for them to do together because I think that that would really be exciting. And there's a lot of parents And there's a lot of parents that they struggle because they work and they uh, don't necessarily have the time, but I think what I see in Nevada is parents really, really love to be involved with their kids, and we just have to make that available and provide those opportunities and provide a very diverse level of opportunity. Thank you.
Abby?
Great. Um, I think that having um, clear avenues or um, clearly communicating with our parent community, the various ways that they can give feedback and participate in our conversations, I think is really important. It's important that we do not just offer one opportunity for families to give input, um, especially for working families. And we need to make sure that there are lots of different avenues, and that's something that should be in place um, across all of our schools. Um, I know that sometimes when we have staff at individual schools who are multilingual, that particular site might be more inclined, or it might be easier for them to produce materials in multiple languages or to offer uh, different avenues for access. Um, but I think it's important as a district that we are thoughtful in our rollout and that we make sure that all school sites are communicating with their community in similar ways, that we are all in alignment um, and that all of our communication is happening in multiple languages for all individuals. I also think that um, offering childcare and maybe partnering with local community organizations in order to offer childcare can go a long way. Especially for parents with multiple kids or even just your one kid. It might be hard to come to a meeting or to come to the school board meeting when you have to take care of your small children. So creating an environment where children are welcome at those meetings, uh, or where we offer childcare free of charge so that all families can be involved. I think parent voice is so important, so we have to create structures that enable that.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Tief, this question will be for you to start. Pandemic learning loss is an urgent issue. What steps would you take to help our students make up for this loss?
So, yeah, this is a, this is a critical situation. I mean, we, we just got the numbers out today, right? Pandemic learning loss is incredible. And actually, it's not about the pandemic, it's, it's about the school lockdown. It's about the masks, it's about the Zoom school, it was a disaster. So the first thing that we need to do is we need to commit to our parents and the kids that we will not close schools. We will not mask their children, and we will not make them do Zoom school, because it's a disaster. And we are, we're, we are in a five-alarm fire here. We're in an educational emergency. We have got to throw every resource possible at this problem. And we're gonna, it's gonna require after-school programs for basic learning to get our kids up to, so that they're at learning level. Uh, we have facilities at Hamilton, we have facilities at Lew Sutton, we can bring in those kids and really teach them. We have thirty million dollars in COVID funds, we need to use it, and we need to target these kids. We need targeted, targeted, target, targeted learning for these kids that are struggling. Thank you.
Abby? You're muted.
Thanks. Um, yeah, are, are, you know, our, our students are really struggling right now, and yet data came out and shows us how much. Although I think we all kind of knew, certainly our educators know um, from what we're seeing in the classrooms on a daily basis, that our students are struggling, and we need to help them catch up. You know, the, the data that came out showed us that the schools uh, that uh, students learning in states like California where schools closed, the learning loss is similar to those in states like Florida where schools did not close for as long. Um, and so it's really important that we realize the impact of the pandemic generally on the mental health of our students and how that is impacting their academic performance. I think that we need to think creatively, especially in a district like NUSD, which struggles with our budget. You know, looking at programs like AVID that are um, research-based, that have um, a lot of support behind them and show us that they can really address learning needs, partnering with local community organizations to provide extra tutoring. Uh, we know that more learning time right now with experienced um, and educated professionals can really help students improve math scores, improve reading scores, all of those scores that we need to be able to um, to work on right now. So I'm looking at data, um, providing support to our educators so that they can identify specifically the skills that we need to focus on. And then making sure that we have the resources to support teachers and educators as they try to address those concerns. If we want to create changes, we have to make sure we're funding those changes.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm gonna throw the next question at you again, Abby, and just also um, slow down just a little bit. What steps will you take to ensure that students with special needs are being properly served by Nevada Unified School District, and please be specific?
Great, thank you. Um, I know that um, I have met with a number of uh, parents in our special ed community. Um, and I think there's a number of changes that we could be making as a district. First, I think it's really important to recognize that um, we, that special ed teachers are in high demand, generally speaking, right? We have struggled to fill all of our special ed spots because it is really hard to find special ed teachers. So being strategic about hiring, I think, can make a big difference. I also think it's really important that our special ed families are included in all of the conversations we're having around our schools. I think our special ed community, or at least the ones I have spoken with, feel like sometimes their students are an afterthought. And their students are our students, and we need to make sure that our school board understands all of the uh, legal requirements and just the ethical components of working with our special ed population. Um, and so I think part of it is about our hiring, part of it is about increasing funding. Um, I know that there is an effort to potentially bring parents of special ed communities together, maybe in a separate PTA, or there is an advisory committee right now. And I think it's really important that as a school district, we place, place focus um, on these particular families and the needs of their students, not only because we are federally required to do so and to meet all of their needs, but because these are our students and their learning matters, and it's really important that we prioritize that.
Tief?
Yes, special education is mandated at the state level, and at the same time, schools are not provided with the appropriate funding to assist all kids. So we definitely need to deal with this legislatively. When I was a kid in school, we used to have regular screenings for eyesight, hearing, and scoliosis, and we don't do that anymore. We need early screening for special education. We know that early intervention for learning difficulties is the best way to help children achieve success later. It's possible that by doing early screening, we would reduce costs later because we would not have to play catch-up with the learning abilities of these struggling kids. Let me give you another example. My friend's granddaughter started the school year with no resource teacher. The family had to hire an advocate for six hundred dollars. And due to the lack of resource specialists, she was told by the district that she could spend her own money. But the reimbursement is slow and onerous and full of red tape. What if a family doesn't have money available to pay out of pocket? This is another area where we need to listen to parents and reduce the burdens for hiring special ed teachers and streamline the processes for helping parents and create partnerships to help our Nevada families. I would look at partnerships with local colleges, with special education programs, teachers, and assessment opportunities to leverage assistance while keeping costs low. Early intervention is the key. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Abby, please share your knowledge of how our district is funded and what can be done to increase that funding.
Great. Um, so we are um, a, an attendance or an enrollment-based school district, which means that we receive the majority of our funding uh, from the California state, um, and the state of California. Um, and we get that funding based on our per pupil uh, numbers. So the number of students who are enrolled in our schools, we get a certain number of uh, money per student. Um, it's a formula called the Local Control Funding Formula. Um, we're very different than other school districts in Marin who receive more property, property tax money. So if you imagine there's a cup, um, and the state of California says that, okay, every school is going to pay, let's say, ten thousand dollars per student. Uh, we take our local property taxes, and we see depending on how many students we have enrolled in our district, are we able to fill that ten thousand dollar cup up with our property tax money? The Nevada Unified School District is not able to do that. We still have extra money at the top. Um, and so um, we receive that additional funding from the state. We also receive additional state monies from the state um, uh, to provide extra support for certain populations of students. Our um, uh, foster kids, um, our English language learners, our students who are um, come from low socioeconomic backgrounds. So receive additional monies based on our populations. Uh, we receive some money from the federal government for certain things. We receive some money from uh, grants, but the majority of our money is um, coming from the state of California, uh, which is why um, advocating at the state level is so important for us.
Thank you. Tief?
Can you repeat the question?
I certainly can. Please share your knowledge of how our district is funded and what can be done to increase that funding.
So I'm not gonna go through the whole process again, because what Abby said is, is perfect. Um, I just did the um, Blue Ribbon Committee. Uh, and we talked, we spent four weeks um, getting information from the district and talking about uh, the parcel tax. And the um, the superintendent and the budget director, uh, they gave us an incredible amount of information. It was so amazing. And the bottom line is that uh, our local funds do not fill our bucket, and we have to get additional money from the state. That's the bottom line. Uh, almost every other district in Marin has a, a funding structure where they can fill their own bucket, and it's overflowing, so they don't need the state funds. And I am gonna say that the number one thing that has not happened, and I don't understand why, that the board, the district, and the teachers' union have not confronted our local representatives to change the state laws regarding this funding for low-wealth districts like Nevada. And I promise that if I'm elected, I will push the district, the board, and the unions to lobby our local representatives, whoever they may be, to change the laws to create a reasonable funding model for districts like Nevada. Thank you.
Okay, we're coming to the home stretch. We have two more questions to go. Okay, so Tief, this one's for you. Politics often divides people, especially regarding issues that they are passionate about, like education. If as a trustee, you were in a situation where you felt strongly about an issue, but were outvoted, how would you proceed?
Well, uh, there are seven board members, and um, a lot of times we have, uh, you know, people have different opinions, and that's totally reasonable. And I think that um, that what's important is that every, we, it's very important to have good quality discussions. Uh, arguments are great, um, differences of opinions are great, and I think all of that should be aired. Um, it should be aired in a respectful manner. Um, a lot of the, I'm sure there's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that happens with the board. I know they have to make decisions about what goes on the agenda. And I'm sure there's discussions around that. Um, putting things on the agenda is part of the process of the board. And what I, what I see happening a lot of times with the board is that they uh, they just take, they rubber stamp the district's recommendations. I don't see a lot of um, dis, of discussion and critical thinking going on. Uh, one example just, that just happened was the hiring, was the approving of a hiring of a COVID coordinator. It was a recommendation made, it was voted unanimously with absolutely no discussion about how much this person was gonna make, how long they were gonna work for, where they're gonna work, what their benefits were gonna be. And it, it just was, it just didn't seem right that that would happen. So I think there needs to be more discussion. Just keep it respectful and appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Abby?
Yeah, um, I think that, um, I mean, I agree with Tief. I think that that conversation is really important. And collaboration is really important. I think a diversity of perspectives makes a, an organization, a school board, um, a group of people, it makes us stronger when we can have challenging conversations. Um, and when we are open to hearing other perspectives, um, you know, people have the opinions they have because of their experiences. Um, and it kind of goes back to the, the book banning conversation, right? When we shut out certain perspectives, I think we are losing. Um, and so I think having those conversations is really important. I also think it goes back to the conversation around multiple avenues. Um, if there are members of our community who don't feel heard, um, what are the various ways, making sure they know all the avenues that they can communicate their perspectives? I also think that understanding why school board members are making the decisions they're making, I think that that can be a helpful piece. Um, you know, a lot of decisions, um, I think that a school board should be making should be based on research, it should be based on evidence. Um, and making sure that those materials and the rationale behind decisions um, uh, is, is evident. I think that that can be really helpful, um, making sure that we're all talking about the same data sets um, and a clarity of understanding around what those conversations are. Um, I think that um, how we have that conversation is, is, is maybe just as important as the content of that conversation, so everybody feels respected and included.
Thank you. All right, last question. And I'm gonna start with Tief on this one. Define public school education and how you support its purpose.
Uh, well, public school education is uh, is available for everyone. It's um, it's funded by uh, the government through uh, people's tax dollars, other real estate taxes, and through um, other, other means. And it's available for everyone. And I think it's really important that everybody have access to public education. Um, I want, I, you know, it's here, it's available. My kids went through it. Um, you know, I took advantage of it, and um, I believe in it. And I wanna say that one of the things I was very angry about, of course, was because my kids, their, their school, school lives were torn asunder. And um, you know, I was really angry for a long time. And what I did was I turned my anger into solutions, and that's why I'm here running for the school board. And I also wanna take a, just a quick opportunity to clarify something. Um, you know, I was said, I've been, um, it's being purported that I am against the polio vaccine, and that is absolutely not true. I am a hundred percent in favor of the appropriate vaccines for kids. Parents need to make that decision about their kids.
You may need to keep it on the subject. I appreciate that. We need to keep it on the subject here, though.
Yeah, my kids were fully vaccinated.
I appreciate that. Abby?
Thank you. I just wanna take that time to do that, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Abby?
Um, yeah, so, you know, I attended public schools growing up. Um, I think I mentioned my husband is also a public school teacher. You know, we very intentionally chose to work in public schools, um, because I think that our public school system is, is one of our greatest assets as a country, right? We, as a country, decided that we want to create opportunities where everybody has access to a high-quality education. Um, and you know, all of the, the history can tell us, the research tells us, when, when our community is educated, our community does better. The health metrics around health, um, our economy is stronger, right? Everything about where we live is better when everybody is educated. And that's the mandate of our public schools. And so I'm really excited, and that's one of the reasons that running for uh, the Nevada School Board was so important to me. I think that because that's our mandate as a public school, we need to be really intentional about validating the diversity of identities that exist in our community. That means proudly waving our pride flag, and that means, you know, acknowledging our LGBTQAI+ community. It means um, lifting up um, our special ed students, it means lifting up our students of color, it means lifting up all of our students who are are, are, are different and wonderful. And I think, um, you know, when we look at the Youth Truth Survey um, around school climate, we are improving, but still there are students who do not feel welcomed or included. Um, and that's my background, is about school culture, so I, I want to bring that to our board.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the question portion of the uh, the forum this evening. Before the candidates make their closing statements, I wanna share some key information with you about this year's election. New this year is that Marin County has implemented the Voters' Choice Act, which offers more days and more ways to vote. So early uh, last week, every registered voter was sent a mail-in ballot, and those ballots can be returned either by US Mail or at an official secure ballot drop box or at the vote center. Uh, for in-person voting, vote centers have replaced uh, neighborhood polling places. And voters may vote at any vote center in Marin. A complete list of those locations is included in your Marin County Voter Information Guide. And all of the vote centers will be open at least four days before Election Day. So if you have any questions, please reach out to the Marin County Elections Department in person, online, or for, for phone for clarification. Okay, so here are some important dates. Uh, the ballots were mailed last Monday, October tenth. Again, the official ballot drop boxes are now available. Again, the official ballot drop boxes are now available. Today, October 24th, is the last day to register to vote online. But after today, you could still register to vote in person at the at a vote center or in the Elections Department at Civic Center. Some of the vote centers will open on October 29th and they will all be open on November 5th. And November 8th is Election Day. Vote centers will be open until 8:00 PM. Mailed ballots must be postmarked no later than this date. And ballots returned using a ballot drop box also must be deposited by 8:00 PM. Please, most importantly, remember to sign your ballot if you return it by mail or in a drop box because that signature is your verification. There are many online resources for election information, including the League's website at MarinLWV.org. But I want to highlight one of these, which is the Voters Edge. It's an online tool that provides unbiased, in-depth information about what's on your ballot in English and in Spanish. It's part, it's a project of the League of Women Voters where candidates are invited to enter their information. Voters can get a personalized list of their candidates, including biographies, top priorities and information about ballot measures and more. Visit VotersEdge.org. You'll see the slide again at the end of the forum, so you can take a photo or make notes if you missed that. Thank you. And now the candidates will be invited to make a closing statement of two minutes each. And we're going to go reverse order of the opening statements, so we'll start with Abby.
Great. First, just thank you again for hosting, to all of the partners who hosted this evening and to all of the people who are logged in and watching this. You know, I think that what I bring to the school board is a unique set of talents, experience and just a real passion for creating an educational experience for our kids that is meaningful. You know, I want to focus on our school culture and our school climate to make sure students feel connected. I want to make sure that our classrooms are safe spaces where students feel comfortable raising their hand, where they know that their teachers and their counselors and all of the staff that are present on our campuses really have their back and are there to support them to make sure that they have what they need to thrive, whether those are students who are struggling or are really high-achieving students, students who maybe need trade classes and who are not going to go to college or those who want to go to community college. You know, it's important that we validate that our schools are full of so many different kinds of kids and that we have to look out for all of them. I bring a perspective that believes in evidence, evidence-based decisions. As leaders, we have to be looking at research. We have to be looking at what best practices are in education so that the decisions that we are making, so the programs that we are funding, we know that they are what is going to work for our students. And we need to be reflective, looking at data, what's working in our district, what is not working. I really hope to bring a student-standard perspective as both an educator and as a parent. And I and I look forward to collaborating with the other trustee members and with the district. We know that when a school board works really well together, along with the district, that those districts thrive. And so I, if my values speak to you tonight, I hope to have your vote. Thank you so much.
Tiff.
Yes, thank you again for providing this forum tonight. I am a mother of two adult children who have gone through NUSD schools. I am a seasoned businesswoman with a record of running a successful business. I'm not a politician. I've never run for any office before. I am a mom who was angry. I wanted the best for my children who are who are now adults. Their lives were turned upside down by the Novato School Board and the County Public Health Office. I have spent the last two years yelling from the rooftop about what we were doing to our children was wrong. We hurt our children. The school board and the public health officer hurt our children. And the evidence is out today. We made children afraid. We put the well-being of adults above our children. That is wrong. The school board, Matt Willis, Lisa Santora owe our parents and children an apology. We now have an educational emergency exacerbated exacerbated by the inaction of the current board. We must confront the learning loss and looming financial disaster as though our house is on fire. I, for one, will demand an apology from the school board and the public health officials of Marin and California when I am elected. We must throw every resource available to help our most vulnerable population, our children, to recover from the disaster of the last two and a half years. The current board chose to not confront our financial problems and instead prioritized passing a $220 million community bond measure that does nothing to fund curriculum or teacher salaries. And instead of focusing on a plan for fiscal recovery, they followed the bond measure with a parcel tax without community input, and it failed. I am turning my anger into action. I have offered ideas that I am excited to implement and real solutions to get the district back on track. I have enjoyed sharing with you my ideas for accountability and transparency. And I will do independent research and ask tough questions when needed. Thank you.
Thank you to our host partners and to our candidates for participating and to the League's forum team. A video of tonight's forum will be posted on the League's website in the next few days. Thank you again for joining us this evening and most importantly, thank you for voting. And now a few final comments from one of our host partners, Juliet Schiller from Marin Promise Partnership.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and to Marin Promise Partnership co-host partners. Thank you to the two candidates who participated. A school board member's role and responsibility is challenging and critical. A small group of people is tasked to give voice to the entire public school community and represent their needs, understand their challenges and work hard on their behalf to ensure schools remain equitable regardless of race or class or language or origin. Time and again, we have seen that doing the same thing in schools that has been done over and over for years is not serving all students, particularly students of color and students whose families are forced to work in low-income positions. We know that Marin County and the community can serve students and their families so that every single student reaches his or her or their full potential from cradle to career. To do so, we'll take every single one of us, regardless of whether we have children in the schools, and working together to have the most impact. We hope that this forum helps you make a decision when voting for a candidate who represents your values. School board elections are critical for the public of Novato as they determine how money will be budgeted and spent, issues to prioritize and leadership during times of reward and challenge. Please share this information in your communities and go out and vote so that you have an influence on the future of your schools. Thank you.
Goodbye, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening.